Okay, it's 5:30 PM in this caucus session with council. We have four items for action this evening under new business, one being one ordinance, one resolution, and two motions. Are there any recommended changes or additions to the agenda presented this evening? I would like to make a motion that council hold a special council meeting on Wednesday, March 9th, 2016 at 5:30 PM to consider an ordinance adopting a budget for the city of Campfield for 2016. Can I get a roll call on that?
Second.
No, no. We gotta open the meeting.
Open it first, okay. I'd like to call this March 2nd, 2016. Council, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Draggins?
Yes.
Mr. Cusar?
Yes.
Mr. Lysisro?
Here.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Here.
And I'd like to have a roll call for the motion that I just made.
You need to have seconds.
Second.
Oh, second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Draggins?
Yes.
Mr. Cusar?
Yes.
Mr. Lysisro?
Yes.
Mr. Morvay?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes. What was it, time again?
5:30. March 9th.
Thank you. Wednesday.
All of you have received a set of minutes from the February 26 regular council meeting. Are there any revisions to those minutes?
I have some comments. Mr. President?
Revisions?
Well, I don't know if it's a revision, I just wanted comments.
Okay.
Can I do that?
No.
Well, then I want to revise it. Can I do that?
No. Wait until it's comments, wait until our comments.
Is there a correction on the minutes? Is that what you want to do, is correct the minutes?
Well, I don't know if you call it a correction or not. We'll wait until my comments and then I'll.
Okay. It's not they stand approved on record? Under reading of communications, Mr. Tisch?
I have none.
Mr. Lysisro?
I have some comments from the Parks Board. I attended their meeting and learned some things that maybe everybody here knows but I don't. Anyway, this is our 35th year of being designated Tree City. Everybody know that? In order to qualify, we have to have a Parks Board, which we have. We need a Tree Care Ordinance, which we have. There is an Arbor Day Observance and Proclamation, which we have. The fourth item is that we need to spend $2 per citizen, which I'm not exactly sure how much that would be, $14,000 or $15,000. Right? Great. So, the board is concerned that we might lose our designation as Tree City. In 2018, the city of Campfield has been chosen to host an annual award ceremony here. It's in different locations at different times. So, I guess I'm just recording maybe half, right? And then the only other thing that happened there was John Craig said the groundhog was back. Todd, did he tell you that?
Yeah.
He's very upset about that.
Question.
Yes.
Indicating the 2018 Tree City program, do you have any idea what the cost of that is to the city?
I don't know.
Do you have any idea what the cost of that program would be to the city?
Yeah, based on the $2 per citizen, but again, a lot of those costs could be projects that we do, like Phase 3, where we may have some tree plantings. We counted the trees from our water line in previous projects. If we do some storm sore rehabilitation projects, some of those costs can factor into that total cost per citizen as well.
What I was referring to was in 2018, they're talking about having the Tree City ceremony here.
I'm sorry, 2019.
Okay, but again, do we have any idea what the cost of that is? Be nice to know that so we can start shooting forward.
I'll ask him. We'll find out. What's the cost?
Yeah, I don't want to steal Joe's thunder, but I am. The house on Kirk Road has been budgeted. It's in the budget, the budget hasn't been passed yet, but money's for the demolition has been budgeted and it's been cleared that we can take this house down. And so, finally, we get rid of this I sore, this disgusting piece of property and make it something that's nice. And I apologize to the young lady that it didn't happen sooner, but that's the process that we have to go through and it's just, but we finally, we finally think I've done so. That's all I have.
Mayor, anything? Nothing. Mr. Moreno?
Yeah, just to echo John's comments, we received correspondence from the fire chief that all of the correspondence that he's sent out to the owner, the realtor, different individuals involved have been non-responsive and nothing's been done to the property, so it's cleared for demolition as far as the city. So, required, I guess best way to say, as we dotted all our I's, crossed our Ts, how we can proceed with this project. Other correspondence I received from the hazmat team, and I brought this up during the budget hearings, they're asking for a stipend from all the communities, a benefit from the hazmat team, looking at an assessment of 10 cents per person, per community, which would amount to $750 for the city of Campfield. I believe we have consensus on that and we'll have to pass a resolution at the next meeting, will be not the budget meeting, but the one following, to go ahead and accept that and continue the, hopefully continue the hazmat team. I also received correspondence from the Moonee County Land Bank and asking, again, if we have any projects to update their database with demolition. And, you know, we've submitted in the past, but our median household income prohibits us from getting funding for these projects, but I'll go ahead and submit what we have and see where it goes from there, but I'm not real hopeful of getting funded from the land bank. That's all I have of the correspondence.
Joe?
Yes.
Maybe John. I had a brief discussion with the fire chief yesterday, and Maurice here too. He had indicated that the Fire District Board had been talking about that hazmat issue and that the Fire District Board may be willing to pick up the cost of that for both the city and the township. Does that sound like something correct? Okay. Joe, that?
Good. Thank you. Okay, under reports of committee city managers, department heads. Mr. Lysisro?
I have none.
Okay. Mr. Morvay?
The Fire District will be working on the budget in the next couple of weeks and, of course, we have a levy that creates an operating fund for us, our capital equipment fund, which is directly responsible for the equipment that we have and, of course, this new building that we're building. And we thank citizens of the township and the city for both supporting that capital improvement fund and that's why we can have the best that we have at the Fire District level. So, thank you.
Mayor? Nothing. Joe?
Okay, we have four items of business to attend to on the agenda this evening, first being an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign a contract for general engineering services with MS consultancy for the years 2016 and part of 2017. And basically, this mirrors last year's contract that we had with MS. We kind of cleaned up some of the issues we had with last-minute billings and catching up, and I think we handled it pretty well this year and recommend approval of the contract for another year with MS. Next up is a resolution authorizing the city manager of City Campfield to execute file an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation to participate in the Safe Routes to Schools program, declaring it an emergency. This would be the program we had a joint effort with the Board of Education. What we're looking at is providing continuation of the sidewalk from where it ends at the intersection of Montridge and Hilltop, proceeding downhill top to the access way or right-of-way of Hillside Boulevard, follow Hillside down to Callahan and then Callahan to where we have access to Gresel Park. So, there would be a link between the sidewalk ending on Hilltop to Gresel Park and allow an avenue for the skyline, Hilltop, and NEF Drive to access that walk. It's 100% funded program if we're successful in getting the funding, so there would be no cost to the city. And the reason it's declared an emergency is the application deadline is Friday, so I need to have the resolution taken back immediately upon passage. Project estimated cost is $460,000, which again will be 100% funded through the Ohio Department of Transportation. Next up would be a, actually, the next two are the same board, but we're looking at two separate motions there. If you recall, in the municipal income tax revisions last year, they require two separate boards, one board to look at all income tax appeals up in 2015, and then a new board to look at appeals from 2016 and beyond. The board can't consist of the same members, which they do, in our particular case, the same members will be on both boards, but they did ask that they be two separate boards. So, it's a reason we have duplicate legislation there, we're just differentiating the two by years. And it's a motion making appointments to the income tax review board, and again, it's repeated in the last motion. But then the deadline would be, or the deadline, the difference would be, the first board would hear cases up to and including tax year 15, the new board would hear anything beyond that point. Other than that, just some general comments. The Mother Nature spared us last week with the storms. You know, they were predicting upwards of two inches of rain and we ended up with .88 inches, which kept everything in check. And to my knowledge, we didn't receive any complaints or call-outs from any of our residents, so I'm grateful for that. And we did have two successful budget meetings. I believe we were able to put together a fiscal budget for 2016. Certainly concerned about having the same ability to put a budget together in '17, but I don't have the final figures as yet, but we will have balances in all of our various departments with the budget that we put together and we'll have a special meeting to hit in a little more detail on that next Wednesday. Last thing, I did talk myself and our zoning officer, Mike Cook, met with the developer interested in developing the property across from St. Mike's. And what they're looking at is the possibility of a rezone to an R3 and putting in a residential subdivision, single-family homes. So, we'll be worried on that coming up in the near future. Just wanted to kind of give a heads up on that at this particular point. And that's basically all I have. Yes, Mr.?
Question. Isn't part of that subdivision across from St. Michael's also going to be a proposal to demolish the Judson Campfield house?
Yes, that was one of the things we had discussed at the informal consultation. That would be one of the first steps that they would have to take is to get approval of the demolition before they proceed with rezoning, replantation.
In that regard, in the fact that that goes to the design review committee for their approval on demolition and that there's no further action by city council on demolition of that structure or any other structure in the city, I would like to suggest that the city attorney prepare an amendment to the regulation that would have the design review committee act as a recommending board on those kinds of demolitions and have the final decision reached by city council.
Sure, that's something we could put together.
Good.
Good point.
Any other comments?
Joe, that, the home on Kirk Street, I was just asked if we could maybe give notice before we start demolition so that if there's any animals or anything that need to be secured, you know, that are around, some of them have cats that are outside and are concerned about them, so.
Sure. And we put a release together for the neighbors, one that's going to actually take place.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll obviously have to go through the bidding process and so we're maybe a month closer to getting that.
Yeah.
It's good thoughts and let them know what's going on.
Maybe another idea might be to actually post a sign in the yard that would indicate this structure is scheduled for demolition the week of or around some sort of timeframe. So, if they don't get the notice by way of mail, at least those in the neighborhood who drive by and see what kind.
That would be good. Once we have a sale date, we could post that sale date on the sign.
That's very good. Mark? I'm going to have a report tonight. Okay. Todd?
For the month of February, we had one marine repair, one funeral, which was a full end term. Four times we were out to salt, six times we were out to plow and in salt. The crews have been busy patching, we've been trying to clean up the curbs or the pieces of asphalt and debris that accumulate during the winter. We've also had to do a little bit of sawdust repair where they filed so much on the road a little bit too far. And when the weather's been fit, we're still trying to wrap up our catch base painting. And the only other thing I have is just to remind residents that cemetery decorations must be removed by March 15. At that time, we'll go in and paint everything off the graves, just like everybody gets the, if they want to paint their decorations, they need to do so.
Compliments there. Todd, I saw your guys out doing sawdust repair areas where they had laid grass back where they were plowing and that kind of thing, and they're right on top of that, so good job. How's salt doing?
Salt's holding up very well. Right now, I've got probably 300 to 400 tons up at the facilities. And then at Red Gate, we still probably have, I mean, I guess close to 600 tons out there.
Good prediction.
Great.
I thought we had another one like last year.
I've been very boring the last two weeks. All I've been doing is working on the budget.
Is that it?
Yeah.
A question. Before our budget meeting, would it be possible for me to get a copy of all of the revenue projections and all of the expenditure projections as you finalize it?
That is certainly our plan, because I have one beforehand.
Thank you.
For the month of February, we issued two permits for a total valuation of $222,224. Next Thursday is our finding meeting. We'll be discussing the two public hearings for digital signs out of MCCTC, so anyone's welcome to come for those, at 6:10 and 6:20. At 6:30, we'll be discussing digital signs in the city at that meeting. Sam Petula will also be addressing the committee with his proposal for 275 North Broad. Monday on the 14th, at our design meeting, Sam Petula will come in requesting a demo permit, and that meeting's at 6:00 PM if anyone's interested. Chief?
As most of you probably found out through the various media outlets, Monday, we had a little bit of excitement at the Moonee County Career and Technical Center. A female student received a text message from her boyfriend, who was a former student. I believe he was thrown out of school. I don't know what method they used to throw him out, but he texts her that he was essentially going to shoot her and shoot up the school. Our school resource, communication was excellent at the school. They translated or gave that information to the school resource officer. He immediately notified our dispatch center. School went into lockdown and we sealed off all the entry points at the school. And we also contacted Campfield schools and let them know that it was isolated only to the vocational school. We received calls, and I know they received several calls, of parents concerned about the Campfield local schools. Long story short, he never made it anywhere near the school. He never made it out of Boardman. Boardman police in our department were able to apprehend him. He was sent for a psych evaluation. Boardman police was at his residence early in the morning that day. Him and his mother were drunk and fighting. And so, he got admitted for a psych evaluation and as soon as he got released, we charged him with domestic violence, aggravated menacing, inducing panic, and telecommunications harassment. So, he's in jail on $100,000 bond. I don't believe he posted that bond, but again, it was a good test for the potential of an active shooter in that school and everything worked out great. The school, Moonee County Career and Technical Center does an excellent job. That school was locked down fast and there were some parents pulling in that were excited and that's one of our largest concerns. It's not the media. The media will listen to us and post where we put them. It's the parents that aren't going to be patient and they want to get to their kids, so. But that worked out well and it was a good ending to that story. Also, on Friday, February 12th, our assistant chief, Scott Weaver, he graduated from the Certified Law Enforcement Executive College, and that is a 14-month program and focuses on leadership, ethics, morals, values, and instilling those back into your community. So, very proud of him. He's done a great job. We should be proud of him. He did this while complete, working full-time and raising his family, so. That's it for tonight.
Chief?
How many officers have we had in our department go through the plea program?
Four. Four, and there's, I believe there's only 370 in the state.
Approximately. Yes. That's impressive. Okay. That it, chief?
Yes.
Under a person's desiring additional information from department heads, may I ask that you step forward to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record, keep your questions in three minutes maximum per person, no more than 30 minutes total. Your questions must only pertain to each department head's report this evening. Under recognition of persons desiring to speak before council, I ask that you step forward to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record, keep your comments brief. Barbara? Sorry, I just can't read your last name.
Fisher.
Fisher.
Barbara Fisher, 31 Lakeview Circle. I'm here in regard to Kirk Street and I have my own daughter. I'd like to thank you all for hanging in and keeping it moving. That's been a very difficult situation for us. My daughter lives next door, but I am very grateful for all of your efforts. So, I'll say thank you and I won't have anything else to say except, "Well done." We have, I think, the best police force in the country, but.
Thank you. Thank you. Frank McKeon?
Good evening, Frank. Dear to a colleague, glad to view. I will try to keep this disclosure responsible enough. No, I can't guarantee it tonight. In the past four years, several proposed charter amendments have been submitted to council. Most have gone to the board of elections with no issues, but some had to be contested and others have crashed and burned. In view of that, I feel council has an obligation to be there on a takeoff to avoid crash landings. And since this administration represents people of the city, it is appropriate to be there for the full ride. You may recall at the last meeting, I asked, "What is the city's attorney's position in reviewing citizens charter amendments prior to charter amendments for any legal restrictions that would prevent it from going to the ballot?" I would appreciate some input from the council or attorney on a timely basis. Tonight is the second time I have approached the subject. To that end, let's begin to take off and start rolling down the runway. I have three proposed charter amendments, which I would like to read into the minutes. The purpose is for council to be aware of them for any issues that would preclude their being forwarded to the board of elections. Personal opinion does not count. Number one. Title: Residents to question city staff members at council meetings. Whereas the citizens of the city of Campfield desire to be able to ask any questions of staff members in regard to their areas of responsibility after their respective council meetings, therefore, Article 3, such as 309 of the city of Campfield Charter is to be amended to read as follows. The council shall meet at such times and places as may be prescribed by its ordinances, resolutions, rules, or by motion. Regular meetings shall be held at least twice in each calendar month, except that during the months of July, August, the council may dispense with one of its regular meetings. In addition, the council members, president of council, the mayor, and city manager, the following persons shall attend each council meeting and report on their areas of responsibility at each meeting. Finance director, chief of police, zoning inspector, public works foreman. These reports shall be open to any questions in regard to the staff members' area of responsibility or their reports by any resident or their representatives in attendance. Council may limit any person or their representative to a maximum of three minutes on any single question. Second one. City managers be elected. Whereas the residents of the city council of Campfield desire to elect a nonpartisan city manager instead of appointment by council, Article 5, Sections 5.1, 5.02 of the Charter of the city of Campfield are to be combined and revised as follows. Beginning with the general election of 2017 and odd number of years thereafter, the Campfield city manager shall be elected by the voters of the city of Campfield for a term of two years with no terminus. If there are multiple candidates in the election, the person governing most votes shall be the winner. The Campfield city manager must be a resident of the city of Campfield or relocate to the city of Campfield within one year of his or her election. Failure of an elected manager to do so will result in removal from office. Council shall make no exceptions to this rule, except if there is no candidate on the ballot. If no resident candidate is on the ballot, an acting resident or non-resident may be selected in open council and publicly soliciting for candidates. Candidates may be residents or non-residents, with preference given to residents. The acting city manager may serve the term until the next odd year of general election and not be required to relocate to the city. No one elected or appointed as member, elected or appointed as a member of council or mayor may be elected as a city manager two years after such member has terminated his or her membership on the council. Under the current practice of contracting a city manager, council may not issue any contract extended beyond 2017. If the contracted city manager's position should be vacated for any reason, council may then appoint in open session a resident or non-resident after publicly soliciting for candidates to fill remaining position of the contract through 2017, with preference being given to a city resident. If the elected city manager should be removed for Charter Article 5, Section 5, 1.07 of the Charter of the city of Campfield, the position vacated for any reason prior to the end of his term, city council may appoint an acting city manager who resides in the city to fill the term according to this amendment. The first choice and offer should be to the person who governed the second most ballots in the last, last election, if any. Next preference should be given to a city resident with the final choice made by city council in open session after publicly soliciting for candidates. Otherwise, a non-resident may be selected to fill the unexpired term with the final choice made by city council in regular session. Whereas the residents of the City of Campfield desire to elect a nonpartisan municipal attorney instead of that position being appointed by city council, therefore Article 6, Section 6.02 of the City Charter is to be amended to read as follows. Beginning with the general election of 2017 and odd number of years thereafter, the Campfield City Municipal Attorney shall be elected by the voters of the City of Campfield for a term of two years with no terminus. If there are multiple qualified candidates in the election, the person governing most votes shall be the winner. The municipal attorney must be admitted to the practice of law in the state of Ohio. The municipal attorney must be a resident of the City of Campfield or relocate to the city within one year of his or her election. Failure of an elected municipal attorney to do so will result in removal from office. Council shall make no exception to this rule, except if there is no qualified candidate on the ballot. If no qualified resident candidate is on the ballot, an interim resident or non-resident may be selected in an open, regularly scheduled council meeting after publicly soliciting for candidates. First preference given to a city resident. The interim municipal attorney may serve the term until the next odd-year general election and not be required to relocate to the city. Any public solicitation for candidates shall be met in local newspapers, Campfield, City of Campfield website, and council minutes. A minimum of 15 days shall pass after all solicitation efforts have ended before council makes any final selection. Under the current practice of annually contracting a municipal attorney, council may not issue any contract extending beyond 2017. If the contracted municipal attorney's position should be vacated for any reason before 2017, council may appoint in a regularly scheduled meeting a qualified person, resident or non-resident, after publicly soliciting for candidates, the filling portion of the contract, preference given to a city resident. Residency is not required for this unexpired term. If the elected municipal attorney's position should be vacated for any reason prior to the end of his term, council may appoint a qualified interim municipal attorney who resides in the city to fulfill the term according to this amendment. The first choice and offer should be to the person who governed the second-most votes in the last election, if any. Next preference should be given to a city resident with the final choice made by city council in open session after publicly soliciting for candidates. Otherwise, a qualified non-resident may be selected to fill the unexpired term with the final choice made by city council in a regular session after publicly soliciting for candidates, with no requirement to relocate to the city for that term. The compensation for the municipal attorney, whether elected or appointed, will be determined by council before March 31st of each odd number of election years and thereafter. This compensation will be for each of the two-year elected-appointed period. The municipal attorney may be removed by a majority vote of council. Duties of the municipal attorney are specified in Article 6, Section 6.03 of the Charter of the City of Campfield. The municipal attorney shall refrain from participation in the elections of members of council, city manager, and from all partisan political activities which would impair the professional administration of the duties of the city of Campfield. I will present these to the...
Frank?
Yes?
Would you repeat that? I have a serious question. I didn't hear, did you mention any... Did you list any qualifications for the city manager?
No. No, there are none in the Charter.
The other question is, what is your end in mind? What is motivating you to make these dramatic changes in how the city is managed? By what purpose?
By my purpose, all of you are elected. I think the people who run the city, who represented us, who represent us, should be elected people.
Do you understand the concept of the charter manager form of government?
I think so.
I don't think you don't.
And Frank, to be honest with you, you have no experience in writing statutes. You have no experience in writing law. I mean, those are train wreckers I'm sitting here and listening to.
Well, if you can find reasons, Mark, do it. You know? I think I've covered all bases pretty well.
Pardon me?
I think I've covered the bases pretty well.
I'm afraid you haven't. Well, we'll see.
Can I ask another question? Frank, is this the, is this what you've got people to sign up for? I mean, what is this?
No, this has been circulated yet.
Is your plan then to get signatures?
Yes. And presenting this to council.
So you're gonna take that information and you're gonna explain that to people?
Yes.
Explain the advantage of that over what we have?
Try it anyway.
And get, how many signatures does it need?
I forget the statutory requirements. Certain number of the electors.
10% of the people who voted in the last gubernatorial election.
And then it's up to council to put them on the ballot. We did not put the last one on the ballot.
This is new.
It's new stuff.
You don't have signatures yet.
Well, the first one is a rewrite.
It's new. No, it's new. You're changing that.
Yeah.
Don't call it a rewrite. It's substantially different. The first one...
It sounds similar.
Absolutely. The second one is similar to what we rejected last year.
Similar, but it's not the same.
Correct.
You mentioned last time you were here that you wanted to see precincts. Do you remember saying that?
That was a suggestion, that we should consider.
Is that also part of your end in mind that we would need you?
No, that was just a suggestion. And that was just, that was perhaps people who have a, a councilperson who represents them and appreciate they might feel they have something to go to.
Well, maybe this is the time I say this. When I looked at the minutes, one of the comments we read at the end is John Morbe said that we all want the same things. And that was a piece of the minutes that I, when I read it, I said, "I don't think, John..." I think you were thinking of moral peace when you said that. Right? We all want moral peace and that's how we agree with. But other than that, is there anything we're saying we agree with?
We want our city to be great, like it is and like it has been. And so, I mean, that's what we all want. But, so that's the level of agreement. That was the level of agreement.
We all want this to be a great city. Not what he's saying right now.
I think we could work together and not, I mean, this is not working together. That's, that's obviously not working together, in my opinion. But this is my opinion.
Keep in mind that anything that I have proposed, council has opposed. But his comments last meeting were, I think, were in regard to something that I said in that I was talking about how to get people to be aware of what's going on in the city finances and I had suggestions on how to go about doing that and John's comments were even.
And this is, this is just my opinion, but a year like we had this year with the budget and having to know where we can cut costs and save money and I don't think if we didn't have somebody like Joe that had the experience in that, in that position, Frank, I, we'd be lost. You get somebody in here, brand new, knows nothing about running this city or where this valve is or that valve is or this, where this comes from or that comes from. They're gonna be lost. I mean, in two years, it's not, they're just up and running.
You don't have a guarantee Joe's gonna be here for a week, are you?
I know that, but...
You have a guarantee that they'll select a qualified individual to run the city.
Yeah.
Under your, so anybody in the city could be elected city manager. Anybody. That's good for the city?
How do we know what we're getting?
That's good for the city?
Anyone who is interested may make their points known to the general population of the city that present themselves and their skills and their faults and their qualifications.
If they're the only person who submits petitions on the ballot to the Mahoning County Board of Elections, that individual would be elected city manager without any qualifications or experience in running a public office. That's a good idea.
Another question. You work for General Electric?
Oh, yes.
And in General Electric, do they change chief executive officers every two years? And, and isn't the reason why they try to continue those individuals is because they build up experience with the operations overall and that kind of thing? And that's sort of the concept of what the council manager form of government is, is that the members of city council are charged with hiring the manager, the city attorney, and actually all the department heads based on their qualifications and their expertise. And the idea is to try to retain those individuals so they continue to do a good job and that you're not looking at having a changeover every two years where you've got to start training somebody else and moving those things along. I think that just creates problems overall.
I didn't sit on the board, on GE's board, but had I sat there, I might have made some changes. Seems what happened to my stock.
Frank?
Yes?
One more thing. Since I think John is trying to connect with you and his sense is you want what's best for the city. Right? Well, right now, you've been to more of these meetings than I have been. Would you agree?
A few.
Yeah. So you are aware of the financial crisis we have, right? You're aware that we were, the money that we received from the state was redirected elsewhere, right? And that we are about a million dollars short and that Joe's responsibilities, what he has to do is do his work with less resources, right? And that we have struggled in getting this information out to the city of Campfield. If we don't replenish that, if we don't deal with this issue, we are, Campfield's not gonna be the same city that it is today. Would you agree?
True.
Okay. Will you help us, Frank? I'm gonna ask you. Will you help us get this message out so people can make an informed choice when it is we make a request from people to help us solve this problem? Would you join with us to get that information out there?
Let me answer it this way, Joe. The efforts that council has made so far have been poor.
That's not my question.
I'm answering that way.
No, no, wait a minute. Wait, answer the, here's the question. I'm not, I'm not asking you to approve the decisions that we're making to deal with it. You're an engineer, right? All I want you to do is help us define the problem for people, not the solution. Just help us inform people of what the problem is we're facing. Forget about whether you agree with the things we're doing to solve it. It's a two-step process, right? Number one, you're an engineer. You know if you have a good definition of the problem, you're halfway there to solve it, right? Help us define the problem for the citizens of Campfield so they can make an informed choice. Will you do that for us?
Number one, the problem, the problem has already been defined. I do not know what solution you recommend.
I'm not talking about a solution, Frank. We're missing here. I'm saying, would you help us explain to people the consequences if we do nothing?
If I'm gonna get on this train, I wanna know where it's going.
So you aren't gonna help us?
No, stop, no, stop.
Now, that's what you're saying. It's a yes or no question. Will you help us explain to people that if we don't do something, the consequences are gonna be very negative? Can you help us with that?
I do not like yes or no questions.
You don't? I understand.
You put them on the ballot all the time.
Those are yes or no questions. Yes, no.
Just a yes, yes, yes or no regard to me doing something.
Okay, I want the, also like the minutes to reflect that Mr. McKeon, although he appreciates Campfield and he wants Campfield, he wants the best for Campfield, he is not agreeing to help us explain to the people out there the consequences of our current reality, where we are today. All we want to do is explain to people the reality, the truth. And I want the minutes to reflect that Mr. McKeon is not willing to do that for us. Instead, he presented what he wants to do. And that's it.
And the minutes reflect it. That's not true. I disagree with what you're saying.
Well, then are you gonna help us? Will you help us?
We'll talk about it. I'm not on trial here.
I'm not putting you on trial.
Yes, sir.
Frank, before you leave...
No, I'm not. This isn't a trial. I'm just asking you a question and you're figuring the answer. That's okay.
Before you leave, Frank, I'm fairly confident, you and I go back over 60 years now. I'm confident I'm the only friend you have in this room. I was expecting a snicker on that. Frank, I've asked you several times, come and sit up here, get insight into the way this city runs. I don't think you have an appreciation for the complexity of running this city. Frank, what you are advocating, I've only been at this a little over two years as the mayor. And I was a registered engineer for 40 years. I'm not bragging, it just happens to be. Because I have the ability to analyze. Every day that I come into this place, I learn something new about running this city. And I don't think I'm even halfway home yet as to how to do it. So your two-year limit of city manager or whatever, it's not gonna work, Frank. It's not gonna work. This is complex. And I'm gonna remind you again, I've asked you to come, you could be sitting where La Cicero is sitting. I asked you to do that. Come on up here and help us solve the problems. Frank, with what you're advocating, and you sleep on this tonight, you're gonna make us into the Niles of Mahoning County. They are so screwed up. And I got a lot of friends there. Now, boy, when this hits the paper, it's not gonna read good with my friends in Niles, but they have some problems. And Frank, you're gonna create that same situation here. You got this community divided. What La Cicero is trying to say is we gotta all start marching to the same drumbeat. And what you're doing is not helping. And that's all I have to say.
Just one comment. I do appreciate what goes on in these chambers. I've been coming here six or seven years. So I don't, I disagree with your opinion that as me not knowing what's going on.
I didn't say that. I don't, I said you don't appreciate the complexity of running this city. That's different than you don't know what's going on. I'm definitely afraid you do. And you like to spotlight. That's my big fear. Heaven help us if that's the case, Frank.
I think I appreciate it. I've got enough time to have an idea what's going on.
Councilman La Cicero asked for your help. If you're gonna live in this city, help us. I've asked for your help. You could be sitting in that chair.
All right. And I understand that. And we can discuss that, but I can do what I can.
Okay. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Darren Thornton, 13 Lakeville County. Mr. Morbe, it's nice to see that you're concerned about the animals and pets. I only wish you were that concerned about our children. That being said, what's the status of Timber Run section? Where are we at with that? Engineering, anything?
A comment to this extent, and this is gonna be repetitious of what I've said numerous times now. We're trying to evaluate this thing as thoroughly as we can so that we hopefully make the right decision. We know 25 miles an hour on Timber Run is a safe speed. I don't think you have a complaint with that.
Not at all.
I got yelled at when I got home and my wife read my profile of the speeder on Timber Run. I will repeat it if you didn't read it. She's a female with a phone stuck in her ear. She's driving down the center of the road at about 35 miles an hour with two kids standing up in the backseat. How are we going to control her? We're trying to come up with the best possible solution. Maybe we hire three more...
Darren Thornton, 13 Lake Wobegon. Mr. Morbe. It's nice to see that you're concerned about the animals and pets. I only wish you were that concerned about our children. That being said, what's the status of Timber Run section? Where are we at with that? Engineering, anything?
A comment to this extent, and this is going to be repetitious of what I've said numerous times now. We're trying to evaluate this thing as thoroughly as we can so that we hopefully make the right decision. We know 25 miles an hour on Timber Run is a safe speed. I don't think you have a complaint with that.
Not at all.
I got yelled at when I got home and my wife read my profile of the speeder on Timber Run. I will repeat it if you didn't read it. She's a female with a phone stuck in her ear. She's driving down the center of the road at about 35 miles an hour with two kids standing up in the backseat. How are we going to control her? We're trying to come up with the best possible solution. Maybe we hire three more police and just have them there 24/7, and we just ticket everybody who goes 27 miles an hour. That's not the answer. In answer to your question, we can't come up with an answer hastily to make you feel good momentarily and come up with the wrong answer.
If there's been any progress, so I'm asking for a stop date.
We're going to do some things when we are armed with professional information as to a good definition of what the status, what is the lay of the land there? And by lay of the land, I mean that knob that you go over.
Do we know when, do you have that scheduled? Do you know when the engineers are going to be going out there?
We don't schedule it. We request the information, and now we're waiting for it. Don't think this is on a back burner. It's not.
Have you already talked to them that they're, they're going to be going out at some point in time?
Joe had a discussion.
I don't have a timeline, but...
No, I mean, it's been discussed.
Okay. The engineers are at some point in time going to be going out there.
But I want you to leave this room. I'm your neighbor. I want you to leave this room tonight knowing we're not dragging our feet. We want to do it as right as we know how.
That's fine. I'm entitled to ask for an update without being lectured.
I didn't mean to lecture you.
Sure sound like one.
Pardon?
Sure sound like one.
Joe, I think it's a leftover motion from the last discussion. In my professional...
Under old business? There is none. Under new business? We, what do we got to turn here? What do we have to petition to the president? Mayor, would you motion B?
B.
Motion D. About a dollar. As per the provision in Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the council to discuss the requirement of a full reading of the proposed ordinance and authorize it by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Tisch. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. La Cicerone?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
As per the provision in Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the camp to discuss the requirement of two readings of the proposed ordinance and authorize adoption upon its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor?
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. La Cicerone?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes. Mr. President, I have an ordinance authorizing the city manager to sign a contract for general engineering services with MS Consultants Incorporated for the year 2016 and part of 2017. I move for passage.
Second. Second, Mr. Morbe.
Quick question. The contract calls for maximum $39,415. Is there a budget? We've got the allocation for $60,000 for that contract. Can you tell me what the differential is?
Yeah, along with that, there's supplemental services when a situation such as Timber Run comes up, that's a supplemental service that would be added to that contract when we're in the article in looking at various issues. Example, Blueberry was one issue that we amended the contract last year and added engineering services for both the design and the inspection for that project. So there's supplemental things that happen through the course of the year that we wouldn't have to keep coming back with the council to amend and draw on or modifications.
Really? I guess my thought is that reason for 50% budget increase, I mean, we're talking about a $40,000 contract and looking at budgeting it at $60,000. I mean, if that's what the experience is in, that's fine, but I...
Yeah, well, again, the other option would be to come back each time there's a project that comes to mind and ask for permission to amend or modify the contract. And history will show that the amount of things that happen throughout the year, that's kind of the end result of the contract out from the last probably three years, I would say. We could add some option to the council.
Joe, that $39,415, how does that compare with 2015?
That's the same. It's the same as last year. What it does is basically counts for the staff meetings, attending council, attending the planning commission meeting, the various services that they provide on a monthly basis. If anything that would arise out of those meetings or out of this meeting, when I go to ask MS to provide engineering services, that's then supplemented.
The contracts attached to the ordinance with their detailed schedule of services and what their costs are and that kind of thing, I was just asking whether that's, normally run that 50% over that amount of...
Yeah, it's hard to predict at the beginning of the year what's going to happen throughout the year for a collapse or a, or a repair or something that might be done without going through a full, um, search for a consultant.
My only concern is the tightness of the budget for general fund and that kind of thing. And we're authorizing contracted about $40,000 in the budget we're providing at $60,000.
It's incumbent upon me to protect you in that regard, that I'm going to keep a close eye on that budget.
Thank you.
Public comments?
Yes.
Hi, Frank McKea, 220, good view. A question in regard to this $39,000, Mr. Reno. Do they bill us on an hourly basis, or how do they, how do they bill us, and what is their hourly billing rate?
Yeah, built into the contract, there are certain rates for attending various meetings that are done on a routine basis, and then there's an hourly rate schedule tied to the contract.
Can you give us a few of those numbers right away?
I'll let the, the exact... I can get, I can provide you a copy of the agreement of this, the hourly schedule.
From your reflection? What's an average hourly rate? Have any connection?
Yeah, typical. Principal engineer would be $360, $360 per hour. Basically, the project manager, $147 per hour. Civil engineer would be $96 per hour.
Thank you. I was in a long profession.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. La Cicerone?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
And Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
And the number is?
$2016-4.
Thank you. Item B. As per the provision in Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the council to discuss the requirement of a full reading of the proposed resolution and authorize it by title only. Do I have a second? Second, Mr. Morbe. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. La Cicerone?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
As per the provision in Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the council to discuss the requirement of two readings of the proposed resolution and authorize adoption of the same upon its first reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tisch?
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. La Cicerone?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager of the city of Canfield to execute and file an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation to participate in the safe routes to schools program and declaring that emergency. I move for passage.
Second. Second, Mayor? Discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Since we are taking the sidewalk to Gresel Park, is there any chance we might be able to extend that one fashion or another to link it up with 224, either by coming straight down the hillside or winding up Wydena? I mean, I understand it's a schools program, it's laid out and that kind of thing, and I don't know if there are youngsters in that area who would walk that route, but to have them walk, not have sidewalks.
Yeah, we're trying to stay within the 100% funding budget. Pretty tight. What we did add as an alternate item was to extend about 100, I think it was 150 feet down Hilltop Boulevard where there were a few pupils that were attending the school that would factor into it, but again, that would take us to the 500,000 max on the projects. So getting all the way to 224 would take some city participation to do that.
Any other comments? Public comments? Frank?
Hi, Frank McKea, 220, good view. I would like to ask how this particular area was selected for these sidewalks as opposed to maybe around the middle school or around CH Campbell? How do we determine this was the best place for this?
Well, there was a, the chief just walked away with the study that was done, and again, the state provided the funding to do a study of all three elementary schools, which are the ones that are only fundable. And by that, they did a one-mile radius around the schools and did a map that shows the population of each school and where the students live in relationship to it. And this was one of the ones that had the greatest yield of getting students into the school. And the plus was there are activities where they have field days and different activities at Hilltop where they travel the roadway to get to Gresel Park walking, and we'd like to see them on sidewalks. So there's one goal that we hope that we have the bells and whistles and the grant application to get funded.
So there was some rhyme and reason for it. I'm glad.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'd like to give a copy of the maps.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. La Cicerone?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
And the number is?
$2016-3.
Thank you. Motion. Just one, just one. As per the provision in Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the council to discuss the requirement of a full reading of the proposed motion and authorize it by title only. Do I have a second? Second, Mr. Morbe. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. La Cicerone?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have a motion making appointments to the income tax review board, and I move for passage.
Second. Second, Mayor? Discussion?
Joe, qualifications of the three individuals?
Qualifications? I didn't agree with me, but I can provide you their...
Okay, Mike, you don't have that.
I've got resumes of the three applicants which were related to the board.
Thanks, Joe. Public comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. La Cicerone?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
As per the provision in Section 4.05 of the Charter of the City of Canfield, I move the council to discuss the requirement of a full reading of the proposed motion and authorize it by title only. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morbe. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. La Cicerone?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
Mr. President, I have a motion making appointments to the income tax review board commencing January the 1st of 2016. I move for passage.
That's the wrong one. You're doing the second one now?
Yeah.
No, okay.
Yeah, no, you were right.
Sorry. You're right.
Second, Mr. Morbe. Discussion? Public comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dragish?
Yes.
Mr. Kozar?
Yes.
Mr. La Cicerone?
Yes.
Mr. Morbe?
Yes.
Mr. Tisch?
Yes.
May I make a comment? This reminds me of the time in 1967 where I thought I made a mistake. Turned out I was right.
I remember that.
Yeah, you were there, John.
Mr. Tisch?
Public comments.
Okay. Ms. Joe La Cicerone?
Yeah, I have, I have two. First, John, I want to congratulate you on Miranda's success. She is on the dean's list at Walsh University. I've got to make her proud. She's a very beautiful girl and smart.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to comment about the number of, I don't know if you've been looking at the sports page and newspapers about the students and athletes in Canfield, both the city and originally the township. They just, I'm amazed at their accomplishments, and I'm not going to read them all, of course, because we don't have enough time, right? But I did want to mention that we have one, two, three, four, five wrestlers going to state. Five. It's a record for the school. Two of them are in 10th grade, one's in 11th, and two of them are seniors. One of them is our own Jacob Isarco, who's helping us with the questionnaire. We have one bowler who's been there, I said, four times or so. I won't read their names. Yeah, I will. Jacob Isarco, David Crawford is a wrestler, Dominic Cooper is a wrestler, Giorgio Puyos, I don't pronounce that correctly, CJ Frost, and Mason Giordano. The bowler is Andrew Letcher. And it's not just athletics, right? I mean, they're academically amazing. But the article that really grabbed me was in February 22nd of Vindicator where Canfield had self-reported a potential violation involving an ineligible player after its 6-4 victory over Twinsburg in the tournament opener Tuesday. And the OHSAA commissioner, then Dr. Dan Ross, announced, mentioned how impressed he was, you know, and at a time when athletes want to win at any cost, right? This is showing so much integrity. And I wanted to, I wish you could be here, congratulate Greg Cooper, who is the athletic director, who is setting one fantastic model, don't you think?
I think so.
For the students, not only athletically, but the integrity they showed. So I thought that was worth noting. And one last thing I would like to say, Frank, if that's how I like an inquisition, I'm sorry, I tend to be emotional, but you have influence in the city, you know? And that, and you could use that to help us. That's, that was, that's as pure as I could ask you. That's what that was about. And I guess I got a little passionate with your refusal to say yes or no. I apologize if I offended you anyway. We need your help. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Morbe. So first, I'd like to address Mr. Thornton's allegations to me, and I am concerned with the children and all citizens of the city of Canfield. Just wanted to set the record straight. Today, I met with Joe, and we discussed the budget and what's happening this year.
And, um, we're gonna forego some things like, uh, planting trees, pruning trees, maintenance type issues. And so we'll get through this year. We'll be okay. But next year, there's a definite problem. And then when these maintenance issues that we've foregone catches up to us in a couple of years, then we're really gonna have a snowball of a fight. So, um, we had Mr., um, who was it? Dick Duffett was here and talked about how they passed the, um, levy at the school. And it was small family, friends, nucleus, uh, emails, uh, tweets, Twitters, whatever they do now. But, um, it was that small, personal communication. And Joe, I've seen some of your artwork, um, not artwork, but graphs. And sometimes pictures are worth a thousand words. And I think we have to start immediately with some kind of campaign that, uh, will snowball, uh, small nucleus message. We all get message out to our friends and family. And I think that's how we build this. And I think that's how we keep it simple, um, with, uh, with graphs, showing people the struggle that we'll have. And, and I was talking to Joe. I think we need to look at where are we gonna be in five years? What do we wanna look like? What's a city? Are we gonna have fiber optics in the city? You know, are we gonna have, uh, the police department that we have now? And the vehicles and, uh, the equipment and so forth? And so I think we need to come up with a, a plan that we wanna look like in five years, a five-year plan. And then sort of work backwards and steady show people the need. And I think that's, we gotta start doing it immediately. I think we have to start doing it immediately.
John, I think, I, I think we need to, uh, tell, we need to tell one story, right? And get as many people understanding that story as, again, as you said, one person talks to another person and then...
Yeah.
You know that, you know that, did you ever hear that thing about if you double a penny every day for thirty days, you might have a million dollars or something? It's hard to believe, but it's true.
Yeah.
Um, if we could use that, you know, uh,
Yeah.
model for getting the word out, if everyone talked to one person. But each person has to be convinced, you know, has to understand the story and be, uh, witness of something, you know, understand it. But I think we need one story.